I have six o'clock, we will start the meeting. Item two, pledge of allegiance.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, agenda, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I would like to request that the minutes be moved out of consent agenda and handled separately.
So we will entertain a motion to keep the agenda the same with removing the minutes from the consent agenda to discuss those. And we have a second on that. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item four, consent agenda, so we have, um, would we like to motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety pulling out four A? Or is there anything else?
A motion is so approved.
So, we have Terry with the motion again.
Second.
Brian with the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item four A, regular meeting minutes on Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five, and amended meeting minutes on Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five. Superintendent Wayne Wormstead recommends the board approval of the amended meeting minutes to address identified errors highlighted in red.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes with the amendment that deals with the fact of how we incorrectly used the motion to reconsider at our last meeting. We now learn the correct procedure, like it to show that we understand that it was misuse.
So we have Terry with the motion. Brian with the second, any discussion?
Um, I'll give an explanation, so what took place is we had a request to reconsider and it wasn't any ill attempt by anybody to do that. What happens is in our policy, uh, not just in Robert's rules, but our policy states that only aside from the affirmative action.
Prevailing, it's the prevailing.
Yeah, word prevailing, yeah. Prevailing party can actually reconsider. That way, a board meeting doesn't get hijacked from a side that was on the losing side of the vote and have that meeting extend forever with that. So, it was an accident, we're going to correct the minutes to make sure of that, just so we have that. And we should have pulled up the policy, but we did not have that, it's one of those rare things that have happened in a meeting. So, all learned, but we want to be transparent about that, what took place. Any questions?
It did not change the outcome of the vote.
Nope.
Um, luckily, so.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item five, open forum. Open forum is an opportunity for patrons to share their thoughts and concerns. The school board will listen, but no discussion takes place and there will not be board action. Board members may ask clarifying questions, the protocol established for open forum is to provide a time limit of three minutes to share concerns. If a patron would like to have a two-way discussion, they are encouraged to schedule a meeting with the superintendent. Appropriate and respectful public decorum is expected, any complaints about school employees should refer to the school board policy KL complaint against school employees. Miranda, do we have anyone for open forum?
Yep, just one, Jessie Beeson. Jessie Beeson, Sturgis. I'd like to ask you to think about the students when making budget cuts. At the community center meeting, a lot of parents kept saying the phrase, "basic education." I'd like to remind everybody that basic education looks different based on the student's level. The kids who are struggling need the after-school program and the alternative high school in order to receive a basic education. The talented and gifted kids need the TEG program in order to receive a basic education. There have been so many studies and so many educators that have come out and said, "The kids that don't fall within the middle ground of a performance level need to have these other programs in order to thrive." If they don't have these programs, they receive a subpar education. They struggle in school, they give up, and they become disruptive. If we can keep transportation issues in mind for the students, then I think we should be able to keep the education in mind for the students as well. The students deserve that. They deserve to have their quality of education put on the forefront. The responsibilities of teaching TEG can't slide from the TEG instructor to the regular classroom teachers. As I've said before, my household sat through several teacher meetings for nine years. The classroom teachers cannot, they are not equipped to handle the kids that over or underperform. That's why we currently have the stop room, the after-school program, the alternative high school, and the TEG program. The kids deserve the opportunity to thrive from receiving an education. They deserve to have their quality of education on the forefront. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, recognitions. Item six A, character education, word of the month. The December, December character trait of the month is compassion, which includes caring, sharing, understanding, concern, kindness, charity, and acceptance. Item seven, presentations. Seven A, homeschool connections program update. Britt Porterfield will provide an update to the homeschool connections program to the board.
Good evening, thank you for letting me give you an update on our homeschool connections program. So we're heading into kind of the middle part of our second year. And Miranda, if you could, or whoever's doing it, Christian, slide her down, pour me on. Give you some numbers and some figures on our enrollment and.
Could you just dim the lights on the side edges? Put that way back, it's easier to read a little bit. Two out, two last ones, last ones. And then, yep, that one up, thank you.
So our, our program has grown in its second year. So that first column there, I have our total, total students and that's of today. We're at fifty-nine kids and that's up from, we're at, we had a twenty-one kids this year. When we add in all of their course load, it equals about thirty-three total FTEs. So the fifty-nine gets to that portion. And we have more of that in our middle school, about nineteen, and then elementary, we have thirteen, I guess fourteen if we round up, FTEs. And I broke it down further to kind of show you where these kids are coming from. So we had eighteen kids returned to the homeschool program from the initial pilot year. This year, we drew in twenty-four more kids from just homeschool backgrounds. And then, we had seventeen kids coming from public school. And then there's the FTEs for each of those subgroups. And then, this chart here just kind of shows you the breakdown if they're in-person, strictly online, and then their grade level as well. So our biggest groups are that third grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade. And I guess initially going into this year, I wasn't sure if we'd see much growth because last year's program had a large number of eighth graders that were going out of the program, and I wasn't sure if we'd make up that number. But we far exceeded my, my expectations for that. You know, some areas we're looking at to expand the program or offer different services would be, you know, do we dedicate someone to the Piedmont Valley area to provide maybe a different online option, provide in-person outreach programs there in that section of our district? Just so the, the travel and the, the distance isn't all the way to, to Whitewood. Perhaps allowing us to generate some more funds by getting some more kids in from that area. So that, that would be an expansion idea. I guess I'll open it up to questions and then I can talk about, you know, any concerns or questions there.
Hey Britt, I got just one from the, from the public schools. Are you saying those were full-time public school students that have switched from full-time and going into a part-time homeschooling?
They're not necessarily part-time homeschool, because some of those kids come in and do all of our coursework online and they're also doing some in-person classes, so they could potentially be a, a full-time student with us in the homeschool connections program. Certainly, there are some that have dropped down a little bit in their percentage of enrollment, going from full-time to, you know. Generally, it's, the middle school is about seventy-six percent on average for enrollment in that homeschool connections part.
But those were, but those were full-time students from our district that are switching to part-time?
Yes. There's a few that had opened and rolled over into Spearfish and then saw this program and then jumped back in to, to our district, so.
Are you monitoring student achievement, like assessing them of growth from beginning to end? What they're leaving with? Or how much the students that were here last year, how much their growth has been as they've transitioned through the program? Like, are we doing any form of student learning assessment on them, other than grades?
So primarily the grades, they do take the state assessment if they're in those appropriate grade levels. If they're a fifty percent or higher enrollment. So I think we tested about twenty-something kids last year. So that would be the, the main assessment piece for that. We have a few that have done kind of some triennial stuff, but a lot of them are hesitant to do that and it's not something they, they desire.
Did we see any, from the ones that enrolled last year that weren't eighth graders? Did we have a bunch drop off or was it pretty consistent, people stayed in, they were pretty happy with?
Yeah, pretty much, we returned most, most of our enrollment from the year before. We had a few that returned back to public school, I think it was two. And then, a very select few, I think one that we did not allow back into the program based on challenges there.
Of the returning students, have we surveyed them or their parents to figure out like what they like about it? What, what they'd like to see changed?
Yes, we, we did a couple of surveys last year with them. You know, they really like the, the freedom and flexibility on when they can complete assignments. How they can go about doing, doing that work, and it's not necessarily tied to a certain time period throughout the day. It allows some freedom for their family to travel, to, you know, do things. We have some rodeo kids who have hopped in and it helps with their schedule and those things.
I'm assuming that families are, the families of these students are pretty engaged with this. I'm just, I'm basically asking you to verify, the ones, the kids that are in this, they have support at home that are helping them get through this, these programs primarily?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the kids in our program have that family engagement piece. And, you know, Mrs. Olson does a great job of reaching out to those families and having that weekly communication on what are your needs? How can we support you? And just making sure that we fill that gap, whatever it may be.
We currently have one teacher and then yourself, right? That are, that are operating this?
Yep.
So at what point, student count, like, at what point do we need to add? Would we consider or need to add an additional staff, full FTE into this to make this thing go if we can grow it to that point?
I would say we're getting close to that right now with her workload. You know, she's pushing to sixty kids. It's not, it's a different workload than a traditional teacher, the workload is more that communication piece where her, her time is dedicated to those, those parent meetings, those, those contacts. And then sprinkled in there is the, the, the teaching portion where the kids are coming in for extra support and arranging, you know, some virtual lessons as well for those things. But, yeah, the communication piece is getting to the point where I think if you add a significant number of kids onto that, it would not be a sustainable position for her and probably lead to a program that wouldn't be as successful.
Mr. Porterfield's currently working on a, a growth outline of what we'd want to do if we grow the program with staffing and administration.
Thank you guys, yep, appreciate it.
Seven B, middle school, our Sturgis Williams Middle School, Purple Star designation. Katie Judding will provide a brief explanation, her presentation on the Purple Star process. With questions to follow.
Good evening, I am here to represent Sturgis Williams Middle School as we finish the Purple Star, the necessary things to become a Purple Star school. We have, all of our teachers have gone through the Penn State training to educate them a little bit more on what our military families have, what they need as they come into our district. We have Bridget Sadler, who is also the elementary and the middle school's representative to oversee the program. And we have like a welcoming committee to of middle schoolers who help greet their peers as they come. We know the middle school is a hard time and a film on your face goes a long way. And we are just excited to join the district in Purple Star, in the Purple Star schools and help our kids as they come into the district. Questions?
Are we currently trying to get all of our schools within the system to be Purple Star rated?
This would mean all the schools but the rural schools are Purple Star rated right now. That are most likely to be served, military families out of the Air Force Base area. Just completed our, I think our goal from eighteen months ago, or a little less than eighteen months, was that about right? Dr. Olson?
Seven C, activities fall report. Activities Director Jade Temple will provide a brief summary on fall activities.
Good evening, first of all, I'd like to thank all of our coaches, directors, advisors, and all the students for all their hard work during our fall activities. Had a great season, we're going to build on that momentum as we head into the fall season and spring season. And just really excited about the work that those kids have put in. Just a quick recap on some of the activity numbers, we had two hundred and thirty-one participants for both boys and girls during fall sports. And then we had two hundred and forty-two participants for fine arts programs during the fall season. I'm just going to run through some of the highlights real briefly, I won't read all the names individually just for the sake of time, but they are in the, they are in the notes and will be updated in, in my reports moving forward. But just the fine arts highlights, starting with band, which was directed by Ms. Emily Young. They had a great season performed during swarm days, homecoming, at all the football games. And then they also had the great opportunity of playing at soccer for our home playoff game. They also participated in the pit band for your good man Charlie Brown. So hopefully you guys were able to see that at the community center. And they also capped off their season by participating in the Northern Hills Honor Band. Choir season highlights, Ms. Jennifer Lofton, they hosted a fall concert series at the community center. They also finished with sixteen all-state choir members, four junior honor members, and then four regional honor members. And then, also they had their performance of your good man Charlie Brown. And just a special thanks to all those kids involved too, there was about forty kids that were part of the set design, sound and lights that need to be recognized too, even though they're not up, up front and center during those performances. And then also hats off to our journalism club, that's Ms. Delaina Craig oversees that. We had seventeen students who received honors at their recent state conference. Several with excellent ratings, superior ratings, and then overall the Bear Breeze's Superior Newspaper Award. And great work by our editors on that. Competitive cheer had a strong performance this year, we had our, another Black Hills Conference championship from the cheer performance. And then they also had a strong performance at state with their highest score in program history. And then we'd also like to thank sideline cheer for their participation in all of our home football and then also participated at the soccer, soccer home playoff contest. And they also went on the road for football as well, which was great to see. Boys golf finished with a strong season, Coach Kessler had a great team, pretty young team, but they finished pretty strong in sixteenth place finish at state. And then, boys and girls cross-country, Coach Profrock, both teams finished in the top three in the Black Hills Conference. We had five all-conference selections. Season achievements, all seventeen athletes posted season bests and ten achieved career bests. Top state finishers, we had six selections, of three on the girls and three on the boys. And then we had three that finished strong with all academic state awards. Football, which is actually having their season banquet right now over at the community center, coached by Coach Kleski, finished six and five. That's, uh, number three was one of their highest ranks and they did advance to the semifinals and that was a great achievement. It's been a long time since that's happened, so a lot of great excitement around that. Had a lot of great leaders and a lot of individual rushing and defensive stats. We had the four all-state selections and then we also had seven selections for the all-area team. Boys soccer, Coach Louder had a great season, that was the best season in sanctioned sports history. So it was a great way to finish off their fall season, winning our home playoff contest against T. And then we got to go on the road east for the next round of playoffs. They finished Black Hills Conference champions and Mr. Dodson finished career best eighteen goals. And then we had seven all-conference selections and two honorable mentions. Girls soccer, Coach Smith had a great season as well, they finished second in the Black Hills Conference, they were one goal out of first place. Ariana Burke had a great, Berkey had a great season with four hundred and twelve saves, which is one of the top stats in the state. And then they had six all selections for all conference. And then, moving on to our other fall sport for the girls was volleyball, Coach Lewis. They reached the Sodak sixteen, which was a good achievement for them. And they also received three all-conference selections, one all-conference and two honorable mentions. Couple of other highlights, just in the activities area. Program improvements that we did throughout the year and some of this was with your guys' help and support, so I appreciate that. Our use of Bound, moving our ticketing system to a digital platform, well, it was kind of a neat addition that we were able to incorporate. So we will continue to use that platform to enhance some of our other things as far as scheduling across the district for facilities. Hopefully, transportation scheduling, things like that, when I have time over the summer to implement those pieces, we'll slowly work into that. Another portion we'll probably slowly implement is electronic payment for our officials, which right now we do hand checks and, and that gets pretty time-consuming and can be cumbersome, so that's something that we're, we'll look to streamline as well. And then also the admission of having our students in the district attend events for free was, was amazing. And I think we saw that with the excitement and the crowds that we had this year. So appreciate your guys' support on that. Another highlight that we're looking at right now is our athletic training, strength and conditioning contract is up currently. So we are in the process of reviewing our requests for proposals with Black Hills Orthopedic, Sanford Health, and Monument Health. So we'll have an update and more information on that for you guys once we get that finalized and put together for a recommendation. Some other enhancements I'd like to go over too are just our senior recognition program that we put together. Every senior for activities and fine arts receives a senior poster. And that's on display at their prospective area of competition. So fine arts will be in the west gym along with all the indoor sports and their team banners will be hung there as well. And special thanks to Holly Copeland and Tim Potts for all their hard work on that. I don't know if you know the amount of work that Tim puts in, but he covers all the different activities, gets all the headshots and team photos. And then Holly does a great job putting that together so that we can really celebrate all of our, our students that put in all that time and effort. And then those students actually get their poster at the end of the year during their senior recognition. And I'd like to thank the Sturgis Booster Club for their help in supporting that and helping fund some of the costs on that project. Looking ahead to winter sports, wrestling kicked off November seventeenth, first duel is coming up this week on the eleventh. Then we have girls basketball, which they started on the twenty-fourth. They'll start their first contest on the sixteenth and that's a doubleheader with the boys first game as well against Lee Deadwood. So, appreciate all your guys' continued sports, your support for activities and our programs and continuing to strengthen engagement and allowing our students to basically represent not only their school but the district in the classroom, community, and in competition. So I really appreciate it. Any questions?
Yeah, were those numbers that you gave, the total participation among athletics and fine arts, was that just high school or is that across the district with our middle school as well?
That was just high school, that was not middle school. And then, some of those, some of those students also cross over to different multiple areas, but no, that was just the high school numbers. And those were pulled off of our Bound, basically our Bound roster numbers, so, you know, some, some of it was attrition, some was game. But that's kind of our final number that we had for each sport, I just tallied them up quickly.
Get some locals, do we have a, do you have like a central location to find out when the sports are happening for the parents portal kind of thing?
We do, if you go to the, if you go to the Sturgis Brown High School or even the district website and then click on activities, all of our, all of our schedules are on there, the majority of them are on Bounds, Fine Arts. And some of those activities are still getting combined to that program, so. But they're all listed there individually, yep, you can just click on whichever, whichever one you're looking for and you should have that.
Yeah, I bet the debate schedule's not on there, I have a feeling.
What's that?
I said I bet the debate schedule's not on there.
It's on there, it's on a spreadsheet, yeah, just because it's so fluid and it moves all the time. Yeah, the fine arts has its own section and then you can just look under the different tabs. And then, of course, all the sports are in Bound, wrestling is a little tricky one too, that one moves and is very fluid. So we keep that on a, on a spreadsheet as well, but we try to keep it updated into Bound. That's one thing that's hard for me as an activities director, is Bound, you're really reliant on a lot of the host locations that sometimes when you get into wrestling, we're going to different states that may not use those platforms. Then we have to manually input those and the stuff changes or if you're not the host, you have to request access to change things. So, it's a little cumbersome but getting better and hopefully that'll be our one centralized place to get all, all activities.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Seven D, fiscal year twenty-seven preliminary capital outlay. Business Manager Brett Burdett will present a summary of the fiscal year twenty-seven preliminary capital outlay. Capital outlay revenue is based on an increase of two hundred and fifty thousand as previously discussed and does not reflect the budget recommendations of three hundred and fifty thousand increase as discussed. The finance committee will need to recommend this increase in the superintendent, to the superintendent's recommendation of three hundred and fifty thousand increase, possibly more, and to be transferred into the general fund.
So, thank you, Justin, we are at that point of our fiscal year where we start to present that capital A data to you in a detailed budget, all right? In the past, we've been talking about things that are going to be built into that budget. But tonight, or in front of you, you have those three documents which show you which have been accumulated. We've met with all administrators, we've put the information together, department, uh, curriculum, technology, our buildings and grounds have all kind of spent the last two months discussing about things they like to see presented in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget. We put that into a two-year comparison, so what you're looking at right now is a summary, all right? And, and a lot of times it's easier to look at as a summary, I mean, because the detail thing, we, we get lost in the weeds a little bit. And so the detailed summary here shows us, working with about seven percent more capital A revenue. And so the detailed summary here shows us working with about 7% more capital A revenue next year. But again, please take into consideration, $650,000 of that is fund balance. That's money that's already in the bank. So when you look at that, the biggest change of that capital A revenue budget will be in the levy itself. Every July, again, we sit down and we present to the board, a recommended levy to be spread across all taxpayers in the district. And we've shown that if you look at your revenue budget that was presented to you, at the bottom of that, shows you that five-year outlay of how that looks like. Okay, can you show them that real quick, the revenue budget, Christian or Miranda? Because it's critical. All right, it really is. As we look at... So the, so the top part we won't look at. Why don't we look at the bottom part? Because the bottom part brings in what that levy looks like. So Justin, when he read the background, showed a 200 or indicated a $250,000 increase for three fiscal years and $125,000 for the last two. That bottom represents what that looks like. So every July, we would, we would bring to the board, whoever's on the board, a recommendation to spread across the taxpayers of Mead School District, that amount of money. And that would go from 7.5 million, which is our current levy for 20, excuse me, 25 pay 26. That would go up 250,000 for 26 pay 27. It would go up 250,000 again. It would go up 250,000 again. In the last two years, it would go up by an increment of 125. All right? That was determined because of the things the board wanted to try to accomplish over the next five to seven years based on facility needs. Okay? So again, our revenue budget is predicated by us following a plan very similar to this. All right? We talk about it every month. What's the levy? What's it going to be? What can you expect to be presented to you come July of 26, July of 27? So really that revenue budget, when we go back and look at 26, 27, is a snapshot of the next five years of if you're on the board, of the considerations you're going to have to make to support what that looks like. Okay? And then our, the expenditure budgets that we present to you don't mean a lot unless we are committed to doing something very similar to what's presented in this revenue budget. Okay? So it'll be repeated a lot. So that's what, that's how we build a revenue budget for the next capital A budget, which begins July 1 of 2026 and runs through June 30th, 2027. It would require half the 7.5 million dollar levy and it's going to require half of the levy at... Can you go down? It would be 7, 7, 7,750,000. Okay? So those, again, the budget year and the, and the tax years don't align. They are, are six months apart. All right? So let's go back to the summary if we can and take a look at what the revenue budget proposed for next year looks like compared to what we're in this year. Again, those, those local property taxes and interest on our savings account is going to go up roughly 622,000. A majority of that is built into the levy. Okay? A year ago, we were at 6.5 million. This year, it's 7.5 million. Next year, we're proposing to go 7.75 million. That's what's making up a large percentage of the increase of our capital A revenue. All right? The federal, the federal income is really interest credits we give back on, on the 2010 qualified school construction bond, where we pay the interest payment to, to the investor and we get back through the US Treasury, the IRS, about 90% of that. All right? We have to account for that in revenue, but it truly is, it brings our net interest expense on the 2010 debt series to a very low amount. Okay? It, it was part of the American Recovery Act where the government tried to incentivize or stimulate the economy through bringing a lot of low-interest money out. The district took advantage of that. We brought $5 million through this to help build Piedmont Valley Elementary. The other, the other income we're looking at next year is E-Rate. Our technology department participates in a program through the federal government. It's called E-Rate, where you get, you get discounts on technology-related expenditures, either in, in terms of discounted on how you bid those out and pay for them, or it's a, a return of a credit back once the project is done. It typically amounts to about a 40% discount on certain technology expenditures. So we build that revenue and we have to show that revenue coming back or that discount coming back as revenue. And the last we're showing on there is, is the facility enhancements. We're doing a little field and that comes out of savings account. All right? So those are the simple revenue sources we're looking at next year, primarily being property tax levy. Okay? Any questions on the revenue? Again, we go back to that, that scenario over the next five years, what we're asking the Board of Education to commit to in terms of capital A revenue to help support the district. Expenditures, we'll break those down by, by building. When we talk about instructional expenditures and capital A, it's basically curriculum and it's technology. So the big differences you see there every year is going to be how much money we're investing in curriculum or technology at the instructional level of the elementaries. Next year, it happens to be we're spending a considerable amount of money on updating curriculum. Mrs. Johnson and her presentations can show you or tell you what those investments will be, but this is what it looks like at the building level. We're seeing a big increase at Sturgis Elementary, Piedmont, a tick up in the rural and Whitewood. Whitewood's down a little bit because of potentially Mrs. Johnson can ask you the question of what's going on basically at Whitewood and why that technology may not be impacting that school. Homeschool connections, we're starting to show that program now as its own separate line item, the budget. That's for instructional software. So each, each license for those kids to participate in that program is charged out of the capital A program. Middle schools are seeing a decrease because we're not spending the money in curriculum this year there. We're not spending, investing in technology. So those budgets are down a little bit just based on that. We look at the high school. Again, we're showing an increase at the high school level based on curriculum. If we go down to library services, it's relatively a flat budget. Technology department is relatively a flat budget. Buildings and grounds, again, that's equipment they need to, to basically continue to provide cleaning or maintenance services across the district. Mr. Will Dryer will be providing the detailed list later on in the year so we know what those expenditures are. Nothing in land and property. Every year if we have a project where we're looking to try to acquire a new piece of property, we'll put some money in there or we'll reserve money to, to make those one-time purchases. Nothing is on the budget for next year. Food service, we're typically looking at, this year we brought, bought a combi oven to capital A for food service. Next year, we're looking at some software as well as some point-of-service computers for Mrs. Ramsdale. Administration is relatively flat. A lot of that is, is getting back into upgrades and surveillance cameras for our administrators to, can need to provide oversight of those buildings. School security, I'm sure we had 150 in there just because we had a few extra things we wanted to do. But we'll go back to the $125,000 allocation, which was presented two years ago when we asked for the levy to be increased. And that'll be out through the, through our budgets until something has changed. Or we get the, our facilities to a point where Mr. Wormstead or whoever the administration is, is satisfied where those facility are in terms of security. Operation construction, we're seeing an uptick there. We have several large projects we're looking to do on. Again, one of those is down in Littlefield. The other one is, is proposing to replace the roof at Piedmont Valley. It's about a $700,000 project. We're also proposing at Sturgis Elementary, a playground enhancement project. We're actually trying to build out over the next three years, playground enhancement projects across the district. But we picked the one that probably has the largest amount of work to do and that's Sturgis Elementary. So we have represented in the detailed budget, a $330,000 project there. We're, we're pursuing two options. One option would be about 225,000. The second option would be about 330,000. We're working on meetings right now with contractors and we're pursuing alternative funding to help us achieve maybe the, the second goal there, which would be additional outside income to help, to try to achieve that, that, I guess you call it the more expensive option at Sturgis Elementary. The big difference between those is the material under the apparatuses. No longer is pea gravel an acceptable material. We have to go to some other material. It's either engineered wood fiber or it is a artificial grass or it is a poured and placed rubber. Those are our options. And so the least, the least expensive or the most economical is engineered wood fiber. The other two options, if we try to pursue those, is again, where we're looking for, for additional outside money to help us get to that point. Contracted busing, we continue to budget for around 10% of the cost of the actual busing contract in capital A. We're allowed to do up to 15%. But we keep that, we keep that there. Activities, this year we had 192 because that involved an actual purchase of a van as well. Next year goes back to our normal rotation of uniforms and smaller pieces of equipment necessary to continue to, to support those co-curricular activities. Debt service, we're seeing that go down a little bit. The actual principal payments on the 2010 QSCAB have been met. And that was about $300,000 a year. That came off actually two years earlier than we thought it would be. So the, the amount of money that sits in, in that fiscal agent fees is about $5 million. That money sits there in earned interest. And anything over the $5 million in two years, the district gets back. We're anticipating that to be somewhere around $175,000 to $180,000. But until that series matures and it would be 27, 28, that money sits at a fiscal agent. And when that bond matures, the principal goes back to the investor and the interest on, on top of that or excess of $5 million comes back to the district. That's how those term bonds work is those, we really don't expense those until they reach maturity. It could be 10, 15. In this case, these are 20-year bonds. Transfer out, this is something that's new to the budget this year based on the challenges we're having in the general fund. We're budgeting to transfer out of capital A, $450,000 to help transition us into those, those cost reductions in the general fund over the course of the next two years. Questions on expenditures? And then contingency are really for those things, that if the contingency is, is approved in the budget process, it sits down there unobligated. If somebody comes in, we need additional computers, we come back to the board and ask the board authorization to move that money from unobligated to obligated up within the budget. So all contingency funds, you have to remember, have to be approved by the board to use. They just can't be there to spend. So if we needed some money, an additional curriculum that we under budgeted for, we could go bask and ask for contingency transfer and the board would do that. Or, or have the option to approve that or deny that at that point. So we're looking truly at, at a tick up in, in capital A revenue of about 7% and expenditures of around 12%. But that 12% includes a $450,000 transfer out to the general fund. So all in all, not a bad budget in terms of this. What we want to do is, is present you those three documents so you can look through and if you have questions, we'll come back in January and ask if there's any detailed questions that you might have. Or if there's a specific item you see in there you have a question or concern about, we can try to address it at that point. Typically after January, we will ask you to support our, our larger projects that have to go to bid. That way we can get these projects out to bid. We can have contractors have them on their schedule while they're still probably in, in a point where they're building their schedules out for the summer of, of '26 and beyond. And so the Piedmont roof would be one. Within this budget on the detailed side is the electrical upgrades in this building at Sturgis Williams. There's still some electrical components in those two buildings that are original. Okay? And that means we have some stuff in here that is very old. We have some stuff across the street that is, is old as well. Last year, the board allowed us the opportunity to work with an electrical engineering company to provide those assessments. We're currently working with now an electrical contractor to help build the specifications for what those projects look like. We will bring that, we will bring that back to committee and ask them a recommendation if we need to bid those to go out to February and advertise those. So any long lead items, we can have ready to go by, by the middle of June. So again, we're not going to go through the detailed capital A budget tonight. I believe everybody got a copy of that. There's always some layman in additions to that. Okay, somebody comes around and says, hey, I forgot about this. Can we get this added on? What we typically do is we add that and we bring that to the board's attention at the next meeting. Do you want to consider this or do you want to defer? Most of the time it goes to Mr. Wormstead for his first move. It's got to go through him in order to get added on after the fact. We've given everybody a deadline of the 1st of December to get those requests in, that we have, we have enough time to vet them over the next two board meetings. So. The Buildings and Grounds Committee has, has got a little bit more information on some of the projects coming up. But is there anything in the detailed budgets that you might have questions on tonight?
So again, this, this sticks to our five-year plan, but our budget reduction, our budget deficit we're facing actually calls for a $350,000 increase and transfer over. So the finance committee has to decide if they want to do that. If not, we have to look at other options or that or pull that out of capital A reserves for that. So as I projected earlier, it's $350,000 levy increase to do that. Moving forward, as you just heard from our legislative stuff, which I'll talk about later, is that, that was based off a one and a quarter percent early estimate, which we don't think we'll get now. So.
You know, the, the project that's in that detailed budget that I thought might have the most questions would be the playground enhancement at Sturgis Elementary. And next year it's going to be Piedmont and Whitewood. That's a lot of money. But if you've been up there and looked at their, their playground, a lot of their equipment, one, we can't repair it anymore. You, you can't, it's just wore out. So a lot of it, we've, those components, we've already removed from the playground and made them unavailable. Two, the other one is, is, is the, again, the material which is underneath those apparatuses. They've, they've tightened up what can be under there. And so the plan was, when we looked at this, was to present Sturgis Elementary in two options. Next year, we're looking at Piedmont, Whitewood. We'll be looking at the rural. Mr. Will Dryer is starting to compile what it's going to take to get all the material exchanged out there. We have some money in the budget to do that this year. What we can't get done, we'll look at doing next year. The goal would be in three to five, three years to have all the district playgrounds up, up to speed in terms of fall material and, and equipment.
And that includes ADA access too.
Right. And so the consultants, the consultants we're working with all belong to the purchasing cooperatives, which means the equipment they have, they've already done the vetting process with that stuff. So you don't have, you don't have to bid it. They also know where the grants are at. So when we get the pricing on Sturgis Elementary, that's priced in with whatever that alternative financing, those discounts are already built in. And then again, as we present Sturgis Elementary, the one is with the equipment and the engineered wood fiber. The other one was with an upgrade to, to turf. And, and we know that could be a challenge for, for the board to, to spend 330,000. So we're out there pursuing other financing options as well. We meet with Skull Construction on Thursday. I've already met with the, the Greater Sturgis Foundation and made requests for funding there. We'll continue to pursue those. Whitewood, where the foundation is already in place to maybe do some playground enhancements, but potentially see what their plans are or try to partner with what we would be willing to do on top of what they're, what they're planning to do already. Or if their, if their plans are, are exceed what we would be willing to do, then they would go ahead and continue to, to exercise those options with what they're looking at. But this is a district-wide thing, not just Sturgis Elementary, but we had to pick a starting point. Okay? That would probably be the one on that budget that might have the biggest sticking point in terms of, of what we're doing there. Questions? Again, please, Mrs. Johnson can give you a much more detailed on curriculum. Christian and, and James can go over the technology component. If you walk through that detailed budget and you, and you have questions about what they're doing, those two gentlemen will give you the rationale of what they're doing. What we do at this point is give them parameters. Okay? And that started with our five-year plan, looking at those, those parameters and then ask them to build that out every year into a detailed budget to present to you. All right? So if you go back and look what we talked about in July, that timeline, okay, we're here. For, for capital A, we're here. We give you that preliminary budget. Next month, we want to vet any questions out. In the general fund, there were two timelines we talked about. Count day, which wasn't good. Okay? And legislative, the state of the union from, or the state of the state from the governor. And that wasn't great. Okay? So when it comes to the general fund, we said we really don't get deep into that budget until we know those two numbers and we have a pretty good idea what they are. Okay? And that's why we've been working on that, that general fund budget for the past four months, trying to get some of those decisions already out ahead of us. Capital A again, we'll come back next month, look at this budget again. Any changes, any questions, especially on the revenue side? If not, we will then bring it back in February and say, we need you to support us going to bid on these projects. So we can get on, get on the timeline. Okay? Questions again for me? Did everybody get the three documents?
Thank you. Item eight, action items. 8A, recognize Sturgis Williams Middle School as a Purple Star School. We need to recognize Sturgis Williams Middle School as a Purple Star School. The proclamation on military children should be read prior to the vote on the approval as a Purple, Purple Star School. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Is that Lee? Tom? Tom, Tom with the motion. Brian with the second. And I will read the proclamation now and then we will go into discussion. So whereas our country owes our daily freedoms to the members of the armed forces, their family members and loved ones who share in their service and sacrifice. And whereas we celebrate the exceptional service, strength and character of military-connected students and families in Mead School District 46-1. And whereas we acknowledge the military families face unique challenges due to the deployment, reintegration, services in combat zones and frequent relocation. and frequent relocation based on the duties and assignments. And whereas the Mead School District forty-six one Board of Education affirms their commitment to providing the resources and programs to support military-connected students academically, socially and emotionally. And whereas the Mead School District forty-six dash one Board of Education calls for the continued creation of opportunities for military families and, uh, community members to purposely partner with schools in supporting student achievement aspirations and social emotional development. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mead School District forty-six one Board of Education officially supports all military children and families. And be it further resolved that the Mead School District forty-six one Board of Education encourages all students, staff and community members to initiate support and participate in appreciation activities designed to recognize the exceptional role and unique sacrifices our military-connected youth make in our nation's best interest. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the official minutes. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eight B, Sturge Brown High School East Campus grazing lease. Bids for the grazing at the Sturge Brown High School East Campus for calendar years twenty-six, twenty-seven were opened at three P M on December fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Business manager Brett Berta recommends the board accept the high bid of ninety-two dollars from Grubel Akali Ranch and authorize the business manager to issue a grazing agreement. Do we have a motion?
No moved.
So we have Terry with the motion.
Can I make an inquiry prior to this or is it after?
Just go.
Second.
And Brian with the second. And now discussion.
Yeah, so is that per acre, this ninety-two dollars per acre? It's just ninety-two dollar lease and they get it for the year?
It's animal unit, right?
Right, right.
So we could have Lee or wants to explain this one?
Go ahead, Lee.
On the microphone.
An animal unit is like they're running cow, calf, bears, I assume. So I don't know what it is, there's, let's figure there's thirty. You pay ninety-two dollars and whatever it is per pair, per month for, what is it, five months?
Yeah, we do it by the month.
Yeah, depends on the year, I suppose.
If they put in thirty pairs in there, Tom, it's going to be ninety-two dollars times thirty every month. So a little over twenty-seven hundred dollars will be the rental for the month. And so since we do it over, so over the summer and we don't do it by a, a five-month allotment, as long as the grass is good, we keep them going. They're happy. Typically when they pull the calves off at the end of October, they take them out. We do not discount them if they pull the calves off and keep the cows. So at that point, there's no incentive to keep the cows without the calves. So they technically wean them and take them home at the end of October.
And then I guess my second question would be if, if one of these, if we go for the, the best option here as far as funding, what happens if that particular business isn't able to, to meet their end of that?
Well, that's why we stay on, on a, on a month-per-month basis. If they don't pay, then they have to take their stuff out.
And then we go to the number two guy, is that?
Well, typically in the middle of the summer, everybody's already got their leases locked up. And, and so more than likely would be very difficult to find another tenant to come in. And, and so we'd probably wait till the next year, re-advertise it again and go from there. We, we, we don't go down default to the next one. We would probably just sacrifice that summer, re-advertise them up and go from there. Fortunately, that's why we, we recognize a lot of the names on, on the list, they're reputable operators. And, and when that bid amount comes in at ninety-two, those folks have been in business a long time. They, they know their business, they know their profit and margin loss and, and we're pretty comfortable within that.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eight C, school board policy, BBB, school board elections. This policy is currently not in place. The policy committee recommends the board consider the potential benefits of moving the school board elections to even-numbered years to align with county and state elections. Currently, the school board elections are held in odd-numbered years. Shifting the even-year elections could improve efficiency, reduce costs and increase voter participation. Do we have a motion? Megan with the motion? Him, him with the second? Any discussion?
This school policy actually aligns with the new state law of having our election in June or in November with that and sets the dates in conjunction with that. So this is one of the first steps for us to move forward with it. It aligns with the state law, that was just changed this last legislative session.
So in the background, there's, it's a little bit misleading because it's, we have school board elections every year, not in odd-numbered years. So this would eliminate odd-numbered year elections in twenty-twenty-nine, right? Twenty-twenty-seven would be our last odd-numbered election. And after that would be every even number, so to either align with a primary or a general election.
So we're on eight C though, right?
Correct.
That's the, that's the first step is to align ourselves to the state law. And then eight D is the hearing resolution for length of terms, which it changes to the even years. This one does not change us that.
You, you went ahead.
The background's still wrong.
Oh, sorry, the background got listed in the wrong one, I apologize. Yep, yep, the background got listed twice, I think. Yep, we, we took a portion of that one. So this is policy BBB board elect, BBB board elections just aligned the county and state elections that will then have our county alignment, which Mead County is willing to do with this. So as long as everything still continues from the state, Secretary of State will continue with that. So I apologize for that, we did put the wrong information, some of the wrong information on that.
Question on that then. Do we need to have like a proviso in this policy then? Because if we do move forward with eight D, we will have an election in an odd-numbered year on twenty-twenty-seven. And this, if we adopt this pa- policy and then have one in an odd-numbered year, we're not following our policy.
So the school board shall elect annual election by resolution or later. So this one, the policy still states annual election. Your res- the resolution in eight D, this is where that background goofed up, Mr. Voight. So this allows us to go to the county date required by state law. And then eight D, the hearing there allows, would be the next one that actually allows us to go to even-year elections and move towards that, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eight D, notice of hearing of resolution to change school board member term lengths. Attached is a notice of hearing on the resolution to change school board member term length. Superintendent Wayne Wormstead recommends the board approve the following resolution as presented, which changes the term of the Mead School District forty-six one school board members to allow future school board elections to be held in conjunction with the regular June primary election for four years. Such terms shall be changed on the following schedule so that they, by twenty-thirty, all terms shall be four years in length.
Before, do not make a motion, you first have to, because it's a hearing, allow someone if they'd like to, to speak to this for or against before we can do any resolution passage on this. Anyone from the crowd that would like to speak on the change of election to even-year terms, even-year elections? Now you can go.
Do we have a motion?
No moved.
Brian with the motion?
Second that.
Tom with the second, any discussion?
So every term will be four years?
Yep.
After twenty-thirty?
Yes. How's this going to affect getting people to run? I'm just curious because there's, in the past, we've had where no one wanted to even run. So I'm just curious if.
You'll have a section of five and four will be your two, two running blocks. You may still have times where you'll be short. If the board over a three, four election cycle continued to have to appoint, let's say, two members over that time, you look at the average. Boards can go down to seven or five in the state of South Dakota. So at that time, future boards could say, if we're not getting enough people to run, they could change the membership to seven in the future.
Lee, I agree, I think there is a concern there, but I also think there's a concern with three years too. When you're, when you're looking at it, I don't know, I don't know if three or four years wouldn't matter, I don't, maybe it does? I'm trying to think in my own brain, but I don't know if it would matter.
I don't know if it will, I was just curious if you'd heard anything from.
We've heard nothing about this yet, about the four-year terms. So. But every estimate savings is to run elections between ten and twelve thousand dollars. So every year we don't run an election because we're on with the county, we just pay our equal share instead of the full twelve thousand or more to run our own election on those odd years.
There's still a lot of discussion a- a- at the state level too, making this work. And trust me, there's, there's districts out there that are going to be able to combine easy and there's some out there that are fighting it tooth and nail. And, and so it is, this process is not done. In terms of election terms, I mean, either the November or June, there's a, there's a lot of, of county auditors out there that just don't know how they're going to make it work.
So you can be like in Brown County where they have, I think, five or six school districts that are inside the Brown County borders. And then you take all the cities, townships and everything else. So ours fortunate is that we basically have two primary districts within our county, Faith and us. And the other small ones are in there, would be running their own election anyway, way it looks. The Rapid City area, whether it would takes place, that's something that the Mead County would have to decide. I have not discussed that.
With Rapid and Douglas and Newell.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye?
Like a resolution, it's a hearing resolution, so you have to do roll call, sorry. Miranda, you have to call the roll.
I was just about to ask if she knew that.
She did not. She's filling in tonight.
I'm last.
Can I just start with Scotty?
Who was the last one to start the?
Yep, it was Megan. So it is Scotty, Scotty.
Okay, Scotty.
So is yeah, just a yes?
Yep.
Vote yes.
Terry?
Aye.
Brian? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Justin?
Aye. Motion carries. Eight E, set the date and time for the twenty-twenty-six school board election. The board is required each year to set the date for the school board election, S D C L thirteen dash seven dash ten. This action must occur no later than January. The date requested for the election is June second, twenty-twenty-six, with polling hours from seven A M to seven P M. The three board seats scheduled for reelection would be for the three-year term.
Nope. Eight C was approved, so you have to go down if approved. Eight C was approved.
So it will be, it was approved, the terms would instead consist of one two-year term and two four-year terms. And the seats that are up is Tom Schenler, Megan Snyder and Brian Voight. Do we have a recommendation?
No moved.
Megan with the motion, Terry with the second, any discussion?
We will strike out that first sentence because eight C was passed in our minutes to reflect that, so there will be no confusion.
Hearing, no discussion, all in favor say aye? Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eight F, amend the general fund budget. Business manager Brett Berta is requesting the board amend the general fund budget by twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars for Sturgis Brown High School co-curricular equipment with funds donated from the Sturgis Booster Club. Do we have a motion?
No moved.
Terry with the motion?
Second.
Brian with the second, any discussion?
Again, Booster Club provided funds to the high school to buy things that we probably wouldn't be buying them. And so this is just to make sure we do it right through the board minutes, okay?
Cool, do we, do we do thank you cards, how do we?
If you want to, we've been thanking them. They do great work for a long time, so.
And social media, we post all the stuff and them giving us money on social media as thank you, so.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item nine, policy reviews. Nine A, second reading of the school board policy, B D C executive session. The policy committee recommends the board adopt the policy for implementation with the following edits.
So enclosed here is that we edited out the reference to statute and actually listed in with that and read all the specific items for executive session, which we follow already. But it's good to have the exact procedures in our policy for future reference if necessary.
And it is state law, so.
Yep.
If you have anything that you would like to update the policy committee, please reach out to them. Second. Item ten, discussion items. Ten A, modified four-day week, twenty-six, twenty-seven school calendar discussion. Attached are three modified four-day week, twenty-six, twenty-seven academic school calendars for the board to review. To ensure no lost student contact time, a hundred and sixty-two day calendar, eight fewer student days is twenty minutes will be added to every day. A hundred and sixty-day calendar, ten fewer student days, there will be twenty-five minutes added to every day. Attached is a document with priorities and questions for Mead forty-six one. Also, we created information items on four-day school using A I from peer-reviewed sources. We will discuss this as part of the agenda item.
So would you actually open up the, uh, last document there? There you go, open that up. So with this, one of the great things the I is, I was able to go into peer-reviewed items. There's been quite a few items in the last five, six years on four-day school week, the pros and cons to that. But I sort of summarized a few things there that also then affect us and if we're going to move forward for a full four-day. The modified four-day, I think you have to answer some of these, but the first thing you, you need to make sure is, is number one and number two. If you look all the research, student learning is not impacted as long as you don't lose instructional minutes. If you shorten your days, number of days, and you lose instructional minutes, it has a direct correlation or direct effect, I should say, on student learning outcomes. So whatever we do, if you choose to stay at one-seventy or you choose to go to one-sixty, one-sixty-two, you want to make sure we don't lose any instructional minutes. And that's just student contact time. Next thing we'll stat, next thing we need to think about this is, which is a very positive, when you look at the research and other items in there, is actually staff retention recruitment. We know that this is a positive for our staff retention recruitment for that and the teacher shortage areas that we have right now. So then I listed a lot of different items there, the questions we have to answer long-term. I can tell you that based on our current contract with Harlow's, our savings per contract right now, and we've actually, with our new request for proposals, we've asked for four-day actual quotes. Right now it saves seventeen thousand dollars on eight days, seventeen-seven, and we'd save about twenty thousand, two hundred on ten days with our current contract before it being quoted purposely this way. We have to wait for those numbers to come back in. We estimate between staff development and restructuring, we'd probably save an extra additional thirty thousand dollars on that safely. So you're looking at approximately fifty thousand dollar savings and as long as one and two are answered, it is reasonable to do that before you look at the next calendars. That only way to follow the calendars. Three on down is all the stuff we have to do. If you're just piloting the modified four-day calendar, we can work through those questions a bit later. But realistically, when you get to number four, and those are a lot of things that we have to take care of, even with the modified four-day calendar, for sure. Number three, survey questions can be done during, before or after going to a modified four-day. But if you're doing a full four-day, those need to be answered in number three. We have to do number five, that's a big one. We, if we're doing it for a one-year trial, two-year trial, we need to have an M O U that sunsets at the end of the trial. So if we go back to our typical five-day calendar, we wouldn't have to rebuild the contract. It's just a short-term M O U that says, here's how we're going to operate, leaves and everything else. Hourly ham, employee handbook changes, big piece with that is holidays, looking at floating holidays to make sure it works because we lose a lot of Mondays. If you look at the calendars that are holidays, we just move into floating calendar holidays on Fridays with that. A big piece we have, and this is an obstacle, go to a true, a full four-day calendar, is the rally. We need to start school a week, week and a half earlier to truly do a four-day calendar. And the rally does not consistently allow us to do that, or you're going to have to go into June. If you're not going to lose instructional time, because you get much past twenty-five minutes on a day, you're going to have days that are going to be pretty long. And next thing you know, you're going to lose a lot of interest at the end of the day. So they won't be productive time. So, uh, roll that up to number eight, so I can read that a little bit better. Okay. Does the district need a four-full-day week, modified four-day week or a traditional calendar? That's the. That's the questions before the board. You have to have a calendar in place prior to April for that. So you're talking a March deadline on this calendar. The sooner parents know if it's a modified one-year or two-year or traditional for next year, and going to look at a full four-day. It's best that we just know that be in March or sooner for it. I put all the items that I've researched and I've read about a third of these so far. More of the peer-reviewed ones going through, there's some very good information in this, and everything is linked in here of what I'm working on and looking at. So a lot of abbreviation of those in there for that. If you go now to which calendar would you like to look at? There's three calendars. I'll explain each one. The first calendar is Thanksgiving to Easter. Week after Easter, where every day, every week from Thanksgiving to the week after Easter, two weeks after Easter would be four days. So you'd really start your Fridays into December on the left-hand side. One of the miles we use with this is that we went half-day, any of the modified four-day weeks, half-day in services on every other Friday for about two months, a little over two months. Knowing that we need that stat development time and doing half-days, eight to twelve on Fridays is going to be a lot more conducive to what we try to get done. It does allow for a workday after the end of the second trimester, where that'd just be a teacher workday midway through that stretch after the trimester stops. I could not figure out how to balance the entire calendar at this time. Maybe there's a way to do it still. In November to put a workday after the November first trimester, which would be nice. And we talked about that in depth at the calendar committee.
So your staff members that are winter activity coaches and advisors that are gone every Friday, they would miss every staff development day during that.
If they're gone every Friday, we have home activities, we have away activities. We know that we'll be bridging some of that will take place. We have that now. We've had in-service days where we have coaches gone in the fall, in the winter. We've had, well, the one year we had staff development and we had our speech team was gone the entire time, which is staff too. I mean, so we're, we're going to deal with that regardless. Either they're going to miss a staff development day or a student contact day. Why?
No, so I'm just saying for that, that one, this condensed version, your winter activity people would be.
The most affected.
Most, and I understand there are coaches that coach year-round, and it will affect them no matter what.
Yep.
Just, just a concern. That's all.
So part of the reason the discussion happened around the calendars that you're going to see here are weather-related activity, you know, for makeup days. We know our worst time is Thanksgiving through end of March, sometimes unfortunately in April. Four days and those Fridays be makeup days with that. Also, we have the most activities that travel for weekend events in the winter. So those days on Fridays, those students would miss less contact time. So that's a win there. The downside is I'm not sure how we stat development piece of that, but yeah. That's, that's why this window is here. So if you scroll down a little bit further to end of, into April a little bit, you'll see where this one ends. And realize we'll have to revet these and survey our staff too, to make sure we are on the right page. If you go to the second one, you'll see the difference.
Quick question on any of these. So for the, since most of these are over the winter and Brian just asked the question about winter activities, at the middle school level, would there, there would be no practices then on Fridays?
That's what we'd have to decide. Those are all decisions we'd have to decide what we're going to do or not do then. Every, every scenario on those things have not been mapped out with them. The next one basically starts right after Christmas. And goes the same timeframe. And we just push the calendar days around where trimesters end to make the trimesters balanced. It's still a hundred and sixty-two days. It's a little shorter run on this by, I think, two Fridays, because we still have the Friday in December as a stat development day for a half-day. On that.
In other districts, well, my kids are in another district, but they have middle school had practice Friday mornings, as long as they don't have a game on Friday.
Yep.
Every, well, every support had practice Friday mornings.
And that'd be doable. I just haven't gone that far into the schedule even think about that yet.
I mean, they, it's not always on a morning, whatever works best for the team, but it's normally in the morning.
I do see some of our teams taking advantage of that quite a bit. The last calendar, which was, so those two calendars are put before the calendar committee, which since I've been here, what we do is refer calendar options first. The MEA, Mead Education Association brings back calendar options, and then we narrow it down that way. So that was sort of the calendars that came back from those conversations with the committee and, and meeting for about, I don't know, two and a half hours, three hours that day. After that, I also have what's called TAC, Teacher Advisory Council, which is a voluntary group that also the Mead president, co-president sit on. And a member there show concerns about having our calendar start with five days, go to four days, then students go back to five days for consistency. And the question was asked, and early on I didn't think it was possible because I apparently didn't look very well at this, but asked if we could just run out the rest of the year after January, so consistency, first half of the year is all five days, second half of the year is all four days. It does go down to a hundred and sixty days. It does work. We had to push back our end date to a Thursday and a few other things in this. Thanksgiving break is our traditional, not a week long. It'll be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday that people are used to. And it makes more consistency, I'll agree, within the calendar by doing that. And it's five minutes extra per day. We'd basically have in, I think, two of the three calendars, if not three of the three, we'd have on the about three hours extra of instructional time. So the first snow day would not be made up. And then we just schedule out those Fridays, including if we had a bad April, we'd have May to make up if we had late May or April storms that happens occasionally. Of the three, I don't know what the teachers' group and administration, we'll talk about this tomorrow, about that. The flow of the end of the year, four-day, the one sixty where we start in January and go through and be consistent, makes more sense, I think, for student learners for consistency. But I'm not sure if that's an absolute on that piece.
What about like the Christmas break? Could you do two days that before Christmas, that Monday, Tuesday?
Yes, that's been an option. It's been discussed.
Did not drag it out as long.
And then you would be done on Tuesday, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. Two days shorter.
Yeah, then you'd at least have the twenty-third off before Christmas Eve.
Yep. Our issue, the one downfall of this calendar, if you scroll up, please. We start early, the twenty-seventh in August. So we have three in-service days, go Thursday, Friday, then four days. For Labor Day weekend, and then another four days. And then after that, other than the October twelfth, which is now American Day, is now an in-service day, full day. Because there's stuff we have to do with dad and everything else. We need a full day for that day. We lose a four-day or a three-day weekend. It's usually it's the ninth, that Friday, the ninth of October is an in-service day, and the twelfth is a holiday. So we just stretch a lot of five-day weeks in there, and then we turn around and it's flipped second semester. So that part, I'm going to tell you right now, will not be popular. But it makes the second half of the semester work really, really well. You could gain those days back. You could do in-service on the ninth. And you could do the twelfth. And you could gain back another day somewhere in the calendar if you took back the two days over Christmas. We just need to make sure that those days work well for high school trimesters for balance. Or what could take place is I could put the day on the twelfth. Put back a day on the ninth for in-service and then put the twelfth. Or the nineteenth is the last day of the trimester in November and put a workday after that for our staff, day after trimester. So we can work on those things and look at. It just, where the board feels that they're viable, they want to try, which will say is a modified four-day calendar. It is not a full four-day calendar.
And Wayne, is that, is the modified four-day calendar where you think you could, we can save thirty to fifty thousand? Or is, would that be on a full year of four-day?
So realistically, for us to get to a hundred and fifty days in the high school to get a full year, four-day calendar would be tough. I think our best is going to be one fifty-five to one fifty-eight because of where the rally is. Right now, looking at this calendar, we feel we can save thirty thousand dollars on staff development. And we got to work out some stuff with MEA. Because we would no longer have staff leaving school and bringing subs in, which means those teachers are in their classroom more. Their training days for instructional council would be on our off Fridays. Part of our staff development, they'd work in the afternoons for the future staff developments. They'd still get their stipend. Okay, but we wouldn't have the sub cost, which is actually a lot larger than you think. Followed by bus savings, based, and this is based on our current contract. I don't know what the new contract proposals from come from. Harlow's, Nicota Bus, we don't know that number, but estimated right now where our contract reads today. It'd be between seventeen thousand for a hundred and six, seventeen-seven for a hundred and sixty-two day calendar for busing. Or twenty thou, twenty-two thousand, two hundred for a hundred and sixty-day calendar. There's some odd change in there, but yeah. So you'd get, you'd get, I estimate we'd be at about fifty thousand dollars, give or take, depending which calendar you picked, saved.
What would a timeline look like for your surveys for this?
Well, if the board says pursue looking at a four-day calendar and survey our staff, we'd survey our staff before Christmas, if you guys are okay with that. By information we found there, then we'd probably do a, well, we will do a survey to our parents to say, we're looking at this modified calendar. Okay, explain what we're trying to do. No loss of instructional time. Two, retention recruitment. Three, money savings. This would be a pilot trial to do that. Also explain that we'd have our teachers in the classroom more because our teachers or instructional council will not be subbed out. And we'll have fewer gone for Fridays for events, because in the second semester, we won't have, or second half of the year, second, third trimester, we'll have fewer Fridays where teachers would be gone due to school activities.
Would, okay, with the, we're starting to do recess, I hear. Kids are loving that. In middle school. I, I'm curious with the time, the extra times that are, are being used with that for instructional minutes, would that do anything with recess? Would the, would the kids just have to plow through those days without any kind of little breaks in between? How does that work out?
On this calendar, I have not walked through everyone's schedule, what the principals would do with that. My estimation is that recess time probably wouldn't change much. It'd be because of the lost amount of instructional time. At the high school, they'd probably add five minutes per period for a twenty-five minute add for that. The other principals would be adding that instructional time because you've lost eight to ten days of instructional contact time to cover that material. And that we need to have for assessments and everything else that the state says for standard. So it'd be my initial judgment, opinion right now on that question would be that that would be go to instructional time. That's just, I don't, I don't see anything else being extended for recess, things like that at this time. That's conversation that to have the principals if we want.
I, I think what Wayne is saying essentially is we're adding time onto it. We're not adding, we're not changing. Like there's, whatever their schedule is now, they're just going to add five minutes to, to each of the things and twenty-five minutes for the day. So it's not gonna. Right. It's not gonna change whatever recess is right now.
Any further discussion?
Thoughts and directions, what, what I really need, because I need to be able to engage MEA and then send information to parents over the next four to six weeks. So we have very good information back for the February board meetings. So you can make, get a strong recommendation for myself on where you, where you should go. So you can have a final decision in March. And then also there are concerns that we have with curriculum instruction with this. I want really on the calendar, why Beth's dancing back there. She'd like to address something that's elephant in the room for her and what it means for our teachers and what we can get done every year.
Okay, so I just wanted to take, sorry, thank you. He saw my body language. I was like, hey, pick me, pick me. The, the half-days on Fridays, to address Mr. Voight's concern about teachers missing, the nice thing about doing it that way is that we, we make our professional learning more bite-sized, which means that we can turn around and repackage it for those teachers who do miss. We've done a lot with Loom videos. I'm asking our vendors to create outlines of learning for our teachers. So even if they're not there, they will have resources and tools to help, help support them in the learning that they've lost. And then on the other, on the other piece, the, the professional learning in the afternoons, I've worked with seven focus groups at one time and just one area that I presented to you last spring. We did a report card revision. That, the feedback on that has been amazing, and we would not have been able to do that if I didn't pull those focus groups. And so what Wayne was speaking to is on those afternoons, I can pull those groups. They can still be on the committee. They would get hourly pay that wouldn't overlap their normal teacher pay and still get that work done without the impact on instruction in the classrooms. So the, the program itself, doing it this way would really benefit professional learning. So I just, I just wanted to point that out because I think that's really helpful to, to the, to the board. Do you have other questions for me?
For you or Wayne, but the, so when we look at the Fridays that are off, whether it's the in-service or the other ones, there's no student contact whatsoever. There'd be no expectation of student contact.
At this time, no.
No, we're not planning on having any students.
So at this time, no, but if we see feedback on, that's why this information appearance is important. If we see a strong demand that we need to expand our after-school programs on Fridays, let's say Sturgis Elementary for K four, something like that that takes place. We know that because it shifts entirely what I work with Miranda on for hourly employees and who could be supervising that. How long they're staying, what their shifts are for the four days to ensure that we can do all those things. If that, if that's a strong demand to make this work, and we know we need to have, we have after-school programs at two elementary schools, and we need to expand to the third. And then we have so many increase, let's say at Whitewood and Piedmont Valley, that we need to add more staff. We need to assign staff to do that from our paraprofessionals, and that creates a shift in our hours. So we don't have overtime. So I can't say yes or no that we would or wouldn't until I get more information.
The other piece that I wanted to address was Mr. Schneller, you'd asked about that twenty-five minutes. We haven't gotten that far yet, but one option is yes, we can add five minutes to every single class. But our middle schools are talking about intervention periods for struggling students. So that devoted time to catch kids up who are behind or even provide extension activities for students who are advanced, we can create that schedule however we need to, to serve our students. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that was an option as well.
I think one of my questions was, so we're going to, the trimesters, like trimesters, right, at all the schools? Anyway, so we're going to decrease the amount of days. Are they, so there'll be more days in the first trimester, right? Because potentially based on the schedule, my concern, I don't know if it's a concern. Thoughts are you're going to add five, let's say at the high school, we add five extra minutes to a class period. What are, are we getting five more minutes of work or is it just five minutes that kids are sitting in their chairs doing? That's, is that a real concern? I think, I feel like it's a concern.
That's a lifelong concern from going from seven-period day to eight-period days to blocks to trimesters. The value of the instruction time that's used in any classroom, based on that, is the value of what is put into it. So I could have an eight-period day of thirty-two minutes and somebody use twenty minutes effectively, or I give somebody use thirty-three minutes of those thirty-two effectively, and they never, everybody out. So I don't, I don't have an answer because.
No, no, and I know, and I.
Two hundred and ten teachers.
Feel like Pete's gone through a few changes out of the high school, and this will be another one. And so it's, so, so what potential, we, I feel like for our educators, it would be nice to get where they're consistent for more than two years at a time. And I don't know if we see.
So we, we wouldn't be looking.
If we see grievance, I know we wouldn't at our level, but if we see grievance from that, if there's not consistency or they don't care, I don't know.
There wasn't circled through the high school this year, a little bit about changing back the schedule, and we've sort of put a, a stop to that right now, back to the semester. Because we haven't gotten to our second year trimesters. The intent with this would be at this time, still move forth a trimester and add the time to the trimester. The best way to judge a high school schedule is not two years or three years, not even really four, it's actually five years of full flow-through of whether or not that is showing academic loss or gain and what the issues were and through that time, are they resolved? So I don't foresee us changing that, other than the time length, which I think is seventy-five minutes right now for, seventy, we go to seventy-five. Sorry. Not really the best answer. Not really the best answer, but I don't. I mean, we've all had an instructor that can do a lot in forty minutes, a lot in sixty minutes, a lot in seventy minutes, and everyone's different with what's taking place there. I know that CTE and lab-based classes, you know, you really want seventy to ninety minutes. If you really wanna do really well in your lab-based classes. Forty, the old forty-five minute eight period days for labs is detrimental to actually learning on that.
Hey Beth. Sorry. Have you had time to take a look at all three of these proposals and do you have one that you guys like better? Is there something?
We're actually reviewing these tomorrow in the admin meeting.
Oh, okay.
I looked at two of them and then there's a, there's a new one up there, but I support any of those. Some are better than others, but the, the aims that, that I have for professional learning and for student growth, I think could be achieved with any of those calendars.
Which one do you think is better and why?
Since you said that there is one that you, you threw it out there, I wasn't going to ask it.
Um, I, I think, you know, I, I, I'm with Wayne on consistency for students. I think families would appreciate a schedule that doesn't flex and change too terribly much. And so that, that third option, which is when I just saw for the first time tonight, where we start the first half of the year, kind of at a sprint. And then we slow our cadence into that, that for, I think that makes sense for families. So as a parent, that one would be one that I would choose, since you asked.
Would either of these seniors sitting right here like to come up and, and give your opinion on this? You don't have to. I just saw some head nodding and some, so if you would like to, I would love to hear from you.
My name is Sophie McNaught. I don't think changing the, I don't think changing it's a good idea. Especially for the juniors, which have gone through blocks, trimesters and just this another change. I don't think that'd be a good idea. I've also gone into Balfour School District when I was younger, four day weeks. And it was just not as engaging as now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne, you said you're meeting with admin team tomorrow about it? Is that who you said you're meeting with?
I have leadership team meeting tomorrow and then I have a, have to set up a Zoom call, TAC, MEA. And the calendar committee to make sure our survey questions to the staff. And then I have to build out survey questions to the community or parents, I mean, based off that stuff.
I don't know that we have any advice for you right now, Wayne.
Move forward with the surveys.
I just, I need a direction and.
Yes, do that, yep.
Needs one, and two, if we can narrow what we're looking at, which is a lot of information here, because. If we're thinking it's a five day or a four day modified for next year, that's fine. But I really don't want to have to put four calendars for the staff, then have the staff narrow that down and then turn around and say, here, community, on this.
I think the option of this, the one that's up there, the one that goes all the way from January to May. But with possibly that change that Lee mentioned on the December, the twenty-first and twenty-second. And moving those to another spot, maybe to give a reprieve in October. That would be. The calendar that I would most like for that consistency piece.
Sorry, was that the third one?
Yes, it's the one that's.
I like that one too, that seemed more consistent than.
I like that last one the best too, and for the reason that I think it would be hard to go from a four day week back to a five day week. At the end of the year, after having done a four day week through the winter.
I think it's clearly worth pursuing. I like the idea of saving some money along the way. I think that if we, you know, started off with a five day and moved into a four day, that definitely gives us some extra time to work into it. And develop and see how it works out.
Ten B, district employee experience survey results. Superintendent Wayne Wormstead will go over the results. Of the district-wide employee experience survey. Principals will lead the building conversations.
Okay, so. Employee experience, we're all, this has been a little bit slower than planned on. We, Dr. Gail, who's been our advisor, actually took a job. Right next to her home at a college, working very similar leadership and data stuff. So we've been transitioning that time period right now. So what I'm doing is I'm gonna walk through this really slowly and there's gonna be some blanks in here, because this is the information that admin and we have to get information from our staff on. Is the next part, because just doing survey results and throwing them out there and then expecting change is not a process. That is typically what, you know, honestly, most places have done and I've done in the past also. Is that you have the survey results, but no action plan from those survey results. So here's what we're gonna walk through. So as we, as we work through our student education, which are, with them on our strategic plan, we're really looking at aligning our goals, aligning behaviors, aligning process. This is some review information there, you know, align goals is, you measure what matters. You align your leader development to achieve results and what matters on that. So that's some of the goal work that you're gonna see next month at the January meeting, a goal, our ninety day goal report, which finishes in December sixteenth. You'll get that information at the January board meeting. For that, align behaviors, align your actions to achieve results. What's the actions we actually need to accomplish to achieve results within our district? Human performance expectations achieve results. We have to say, is this our expectation to see the results? We have to hold people accountable to that level and praise them also for that. So that's your reward piece there. And align, align process. Take your bright spots, improve those cycles, continue those achieve results are even greater. And align talent resources to achieve results where you're not doing so well. So the next one really breaks it down better. This is that and very short messaging. We measure what we value. If we wanna see student growth and gain, we need to be measuring that, looking at, making changes and plans. What we recognize we get more, this is where the praise comes in. You know, right before Christmas, we had these results, or Thanksgiving, I mean, we had the results come in and we had all these staff mentioned. About the, their helpful and supporting other people. So I just put that out before Thanksgiving, thanking them for all the work they did, because they all got mentioned. We had people cut, mentioned countless times how they've been supportive of other staff members. And that's being praised by your peers next to you, saying, thank you, Justin, for taking care of that is one thing. But being recognized publicly actually helps support that overall. So we have a lot of work to do there. And the one I've been, I talked about my weekly up to date about a week ago or so was what we permit, we promote. What we permit in great behaviors, we promote in great behaviors. Things that we don't address, things that we permit to happen, that's the behavior promoted as our standard. So in a district, we have to say, what's our highest standard we wanna have and we wanna permit that and we don't permit anything below it and we promote those great standards. So we have two choices, dress nothing. And not, and permit things that are bad and that's, that's what we're gonna rally around, or we permit. High standards and promote those things to follow through. So as we move forward with this, we have to have a baseline. So survey cycles and feedback loops. Surveys themselves don't do anything but the results. Plus sharing the results, plus choosing action, plan to improve, and then doing continuous improvement on that of the things you target. Is how you improve an organization. If you've ever seen the Baldridge model, this is a big piece that's used in healthcare and other Fortune five hundred companies. For the Bald, Baldridge model is more detailed. This is a simplified version of, of taking care of that. So to the next one. So here's the terminology we're gonna use today in the district-wide one. And some of this is not used at the building level. But those results, they need, the principals will talk about the district-wide. What's the mean score? Everybody know what the mean is? Who can tell me what the mean is? Here's your quiz, guys. We got a guy yelling, or average, it's right, average. All right, so top box and top two box. They look at top box and top two box are two very important things. Top box is strongly agree. People, the percentage of people that marked strongly agree for an item. Top two box courses, those who strongly agree and agree with that statement, positive statements. You wanna see, while you're looking at that, what's the percentage of people who did this survey that actually are in that top area? Net promoter score, I'll talk about that. That's how you sell your district or sell the place of work or your department. And how people are actually promoting or not promoting your area. And then of course, open it in comments with that. All right, next one. So here's the overall. We had two hundred and seventeen participants and we had an overall mean score of three point seven seven as our first year baseline on an average. Options of one through five. Okay. Slightly above average. Uh, net promoter score, eight point eight, that's in a positive. We'll talk about that in a little bit. And then here's one that it doesn't identify the buildings or programs working. But you say, would I recommend the district to place to work? Our net positive is eight point eight. That's okay. What's good to see is recommended immediate work environment. So we as a school board. Think of the district would be eight point eight. But those on the committee for finance might say it's a twenty-eight point eight four. So that really where you do your work. So if I'm a, I work in the district, but I'm a, I work in the high school and I say, I really like where the high school works, twenty-eight point eight. So it focuses down there. Our thing is we don't break the data down by building on this piece. It's just on our, our staff say, do I really like where I work? Am I promoting my environment and promoting Stage Bar Middle School? I'm promoting Sturgis Elementary and I'm promoting maintenance and I'm promoting special education. So that's the idea behind that. Next one.
I'm sorry, I guess I, twenty-eight point eight, based off of what, out of what?
That's coming up.
Oh.
Okay, I'm just giving you the context of what, how it's sort of looked at. That's actually a, a good score with that. So. So. The big questions, what are we doing well? What needs to be improved? And what are the highest priorities or areas that need attention to this? These are, no, I have the similar questions, but the way student rolls is out just a little bit better on, on achieving some positives, so, and growth with this. So next slide. Our numeric data. Make that just a little bit bigger. So this is our average scores and employee experience survey. So, and this is the entire district. So when you look at this, you're gonna say, the first step, they're gonna say, what are your top three? Second step, what's your bottom three? Because realistically, setting twenty separate goals across twenty different areas is not gonna be easy to manage and or achieve. So you look at your top three to say, what do we wanna continue to do well and grow and build off that? And you look at your bottom three and say, how do we address these things? So move up. This is part of our conversation tomorrow, so with admin. To start with. So our results, I believe my pos, believe my work positively impacts those we serve, four point three seven. Feel a sense of pride when I tell people where I work, four point one four. And have a clear understanding of my expectations as an employee, four point one. So we go to the next one. So the employment engagement top results discussion. Now what we can do is, as a district admin team, we start with this. And then as a district results, I need to set up some small focus groups. I'll probably use our TAC, district-wide TAC. And then I need to use a couple other groups just to talk about this, okay? And what we're doing well. But, you know, what do we do well that led to these results? So we're gonna have to identify on these three areas, what are we doing well that led to positive results? So I'll go to the bottom one, because I think this is one why, slide back up please. Yep, so I have clear understanding of my expectations as an employee. We focused over the last two years and actually three years in the height, in the teaching side of onboarding our staff with teacher bootcamp. This last year, eighteen months, we really focused on our hourly employees of how we onboard them and do a better job. So to be honest, a lot of schools, and we were not immune to this five, six years ago, you get hired. You show up for your extra day or two of in-service, drink through a fire hose. Start school, maybe you had a day of curriculum instruction, a brand new reading curriculum that year and you're an elementary teacher. So you got a brand new curriculum, starting a brand new job and you're gonna say, here we go, good luck. Now, every building did something different and did more. Now what we have is that we have a three day bootcamp, where we bring administration in, we bring special ed in, we bring HR in. We walk through that process to have people feel comfortable and on-boarded before that. They get their technology, they get their curriculum. They have a mentor assigned that they can connect things to. That was receiving positive results on that. And we offer any of those new first year hires to come back the second year and do it again. If they'd like to, just to learn something. Some do come back, a few here or there about certain topics. Well, we start at the hourly, and I might get a piece wrong on this one, Miranda, so you can fill in the blank that I get wrong. We've actually gone to, instead of random hiring and putting people on board and sending them to the building, we actually put in a process where someone gets hired. We bring them on board about every two weeks, because we have those hourly employees that come on over time. So it's been much more orderly and we're finding out that people appreciate the structure. So we're trying to do a better job of growing those expectations as an employee. And then we communicate better about when they show up to the first work, so that building's prepared to walk them through and they're not surprised that someone's coming on. So those things we wanna continue and grow. That's, that's an example of that one. Please go up. So that, what practice do we all do that make a difference? In the district, those are the things that we're really trying to cite and what will we do that, what we want to keep doing. Our notes here, we should probably identify about six items that we do well. What would, what are the biggest impacts that we need to do? And how do well do we wanna keep that going so the long term that we become better at what we're good at? A lot of times you see a good score, what do you do? Well, that's a good score. Let's turn over here and do something else and forget that this is what's making us strong. So that'd be a piece of focus and emphasis. And this will be by the buildings on their scores will do the same thing. Uh, go up the next one. Bottom three results, I feel that district level resources allocated to maximize effectiveness across the organization, three point one eight. I feel supported in balancing my work responsibilities. And then I feel district culture supports open and honest communication. They're all above three, that's good. I like to see them all above four, you're darn right. So let's go to the next part. So the question's a little bit different, not what you're doing wrong. It asks a question of positive. If we were operating in such a way, we wanted to achieve a five, or we, in such a way to achieve a five, what would that look like? So let's go back up and take one of these and walk through this. I feel supported and balanced my work responsibilities. Or let's take, I feel that district culture supports open honest communication or district level, any one of those. So I'm gonna pick on, out of the blue, I'm gonna pick on, um, culture. Let's go down to that three point five, it's on the bottom. So. So we had to honestly look at, it says, what does a five look like? Okay, we're doing survey stuff and we're seeing that people appreciate that we're communicating more, we're doing things. But we're going to say, as a group, as administrators and then also focus group, what does it look like if we're at a five? Because a lot of times, what do we hear in communication? You've all heard this. We're communicating more than we ever have and it's still not good enough. We're putting out more information. So we try to circle in, what does great communication look like? By asking our people says, what does great communication look like? And then we say, what do we have to do to make steps towards that? So that's second question, what are one or two actions that help make a change toward improvement that we could start tomorrow? Nothing? Massive change like a, like a typically, and I've done this, let's start a newsletter, a new newsletter. Maybe it's something small, like we just started doing weekly updates that you receive. Just little pieces, little snippets, that helps people understand what's taking place in the district that week or is coming up. That'd be a small one. What's the next thing? The big piece of this in the conversation from the first question. Loops right back down to the third question, did we uncover any blind spots? Because we're creatures of habit. This is the way I've done it, this is the way I'm doing it, this is what I've heard, this is the way it's always been. Communication's never gonna be good enough. Were we able to, by having decent conversations, was there a blind spot for district administration? Building administration or overall school board even communication, that we could do a better job that we just weren't aware of? So the process is really talking about how we get to good answers and small steps of improvement. And then measuring that. So go to the next page. Now, what takes place, there's gonna be some things here, there's be questions that admin team has, teach staff. What do we wanna learn more about any of our numeric data results? Is there something that just doesn't make sense or we need more information so we can make a better action plan? We figure out what those pieces are and we turn around and we ask the question, very short, one or two. Questions max to figure out what do we want to know more of and why? That may be a great communication question. Might be, if you go back up one page, for communication, we just sent out to all staff. If five is the best communication the media school district could do. Explain to us what level five communication means to you. At the district level? If that's your issue, if it's building level's fine, we wouldn't do the building level. What's that look like? If there's one or two things we can take out of that, then that's what we put as our action plan. Makes sense? Incremental growth. And if you're similar with the Mayo or Baldridge, this would actually look a little bit familiar by pre-education. So continue going up. So that's the next piece of that that we'll be doing. Um, and we go over this tomorrow with the admin team and they're building results and they build their conversations out. By doing our district-wide conversation first. So the net promoter score, now there's three areas. You're either promoter, you're passive, or you're detractor. This is a scale of one to ten. This has been used for customer loyalty. It's been around for decades with this. It's a proven metrics for this. A promoter is a nine or ten. They're engaged, they're enthusiastic, they are promoting the district. A promoter is a nine or 10, they're engaged, they're enthusiastic, they are promoting the district or your place of employment. Passes are on the fence. They like it, they don't like it, it's all okay. If a great opportunity came up, they might consider it. Or they might stay. Detractors are unhappy or dissatisfied. Okay, they aren't beneficial to your employment, your, your business. So when you look at these scores. Negative one to zero, more detractors than promoters. You have an opportunity for improvement. Uh, zero to three, good performance, opportunity for improvement, three to fifty, strong performance, sustain or grow it and fifty to one hundred excellent. How you get to that? You take the nine, 10 percentage promoters and subtract the detractors. That's how it is. So when you look at our net promoter score, very simply, we have more promoters than we have detractors and our score is eight point eight. It's a positive. I was actually happy to see a positive. Of course, everybody wants to see a bigger number, but we're in the positive that I've actually seen. Um, schools that started in the negative. I was realistic, I thought we could be negative five, negative two, something like that, but I'm, I'm happy that eight point eight. Especially considering the timing of the survey. Do you want me to put the survey out? Right over the October board meeting time. Releasing budget cuts and everything on school close. Okay. So, and thing is, we'll do it again next year at that time. Cause we want to have, be consistent on that process. So next page. So here are some top NPS scores for 2025 places to work. Those are some amazingly good scores. All right, next one. So the question you get is why are the passives excluded? People who are lukewarm about organization don't influence others such as promoters or detractors. You're either selling the dis, our district or you're hurting our district. Passive don't make big changes in your staff morale. Moving passives. To supporters. Make a big difference in where your district goes. Moving some detractors to passive, that can make a difference. But so, but your passives really aren't making a big thing. It's critical to understand how large each group is and figure out how to turn. As I just said, I guess I just repeated myself there. Next page. So here's where those scores come in. What is your initial thoughts about our net promoter results? Eight point eight. Recommend the district. And the second one is are there, you know, recommend immediate work environment. So. I'm in maintenance, I'm at the high school, I'm at Sturgis elementary. This is what our people are saying about their immediate work environment. That might be as tight as an office at elementary. It's what they're thinking because it's allows employees to say that. That's a solid start score right there. Okay. So when you think about this, what does this tell you about our district? The first one, eight point eight.
Yeah, we have room for improvement, but we're good. Based on the, based on the little scale.
Yeah. Based on the scale, okay. You know, when you, you think about this, the difference between this and two hundred and seventeen is sixteen people changing their opinion one direction or another. So when you really think about the number that we have, if we have three hundred and fifteen or three hundred out of our four hundred and twenty employees do this. Can we sustain that and the people not taking other detractors? Or their promoters or their passes? How big a change is that? We had a fit, which for a survey result, first time fifty percent is not bad, but if we went seventy five percent, how far is that swing of that? So like, and this is why I always looked at survey results at times too in the past is it looks good. Room for improvement. What's our plan for improvement? That's going to be the big thing. Are there areas that we might want to influence in future years on this? The twenty eight point eight four, that tells me the closer people work. Uh, closer they are to the position of work they do, the happier they are with where they're at and they're in promoter building. So that's, that's the whole net effect. When you look at the D K P, I think, uh, you got the initials right, that does the annual education survey, they say. The public has little faith in the education system across the country. They have better faith in it when in their state level. They have a lot more faith in the district, results get better as you go to, um, their district. And the things where they score off the charts, they love their local schools. That's an effect that we're seeing right here too. So people like their local areas where they're working and that's a good thing to be taken about that. How can we move influences in the future years? So that's something we'll be working on also. Next page. Open ended responses. So this took me a while, scroll up. So we really look at this, how we look at these, uh, questions and comments with this. What's the first thing if you get re survey results about yourself or your organization that you're leading or something like that? First thing everybody wants to jump to is either super positives. The really bad negatives. So this allows you to really break this down and I actually put this into an AI tool when I got my first draft. On this is put all of our comments in them, comments by buildings and saying. If the comment is specific, relevant and actionable, okay, and a positive comment, that's something that we can work on. If it's a neutral comment. Is there implied concern worth considering? You feel the topic is relevant, the comment aligns with organization goals and priorities. If it does those things. You may want to work on that as make some growth on a neutral. Okay. Not constructive, the comment is inappropriate swearing derogatory rude or offensive directed in a personal way. What's that tell you right away? What are we going to do with that comment? We're, we're going to eliminate that because it's not constructive. Now it's, it's considered a negative comment if it's not actual, not enough detail, known or relevant. So now you can have a positive comment. That is not promoting. This is sound strange. Something great. They're making a comment in the way that says it's specific, relevant and actionable about improving. Something. That's okay. That gives you actionable information to make something better for your staff, your district. So that's, that's how we'll be working through that. We have a lot of work to do on this one. Just because it's a lot more work to work through your comments without sorting them out personally. For that. And we have comments on every building. We have comments on the district as a whole. Keep going. So you do look at overall trends and area of focus. What's the trends? What's the area of focus? And when you put these out there, you start saying, well, we aren't going to make action on this because there's not enough information, not enough detail. It's derogatory. You can start sorting through very simply. So you get to your point of actionable areas where people can work and make improvements. Is the purpose. It's a sorting metrics. Next. So when you look at that, what did we do well? What needs to be improved overall? Identify what are the highest priorities or areas that need attention this year? You can't have a list of eighteen things you want to work on. They then have to say, we have these two things that, uh, stage bar middle school, Dr. Olson's going to work on since I'm looking at him. Because he identified these two areas to make an impact along with his score areas, those three, especially if they align. Through those score areas, identified what they can do, comments. How to make the biggest gain is by doing it and engaging your staff in the process, making sure they know. What took place, what the information was and what we're going to do about it. Which is usually not always done with survey results, including in my past. I've done that also. Next page. Are we done? Okay, I thought we had one more. I thought we had a page that said the end. Sorry. So that's a long, so I want to understand, I wanted the board to understand what we're going to be doing with these survey results. At the district level and then turn around what we're going to be doing at the building level. Um, for that, the better we do at every building level, the better our district does overall. Okay, the better we do overall as a district, the happier our employees, the better we do at our buildings, the happier our employees. The more of a place we are to retain and recruit staff, more energy to help serve students. It's all cyclical. But these are three to five year processes as we go through this, we, we can't just say, hey, we did a survey, we need three years with the data, four years of data. And, and continued improvement cycles to do, do well. So now that I put you mostly to sleep. Questions.
Do we have to do the top three or was it like when you said you could align some of these interests? Could you pick the number four, five or six and, and try to align it with?
Um, the key is the more you, the, you know, if you, you know, we have some online stuff, the more you try to focus on at once. The less well of a job you'll do across the board. Remember times where all of a sudden we say, you know what, two really align of our top three or bottom three, two really line really well. And it makes it very easy for us to create synergy of two or three actions. We may only do two of them. Okay, but what we probably want to do is add more to those three. Because it, it just pushes everything so thin, we, we can't accomplish that and measure it as easily. And stay focused.
On to Tom's point though, if, if they had a way of ranking the importance. You, you care less about what the mean score was and you care more about what their ranking is compared to how far they are away on their mean score.
Once you identify the three, you're not really looking at the mean score anymore. You're just identifying if there's a focus group that you can work on. You could take, as soon as you, if you focus, it's okay. I told, didn't have the mean score up there and said, these are the three areas. Would that change anything? We're going to try to work on that because we didn't have the mean score. Once we had it identified, like you said, if it's three or six. Rank three lowest. Doesn't matter what the mean score is. These are the things we need to work on.
I mean, that baseline's hard to work off of, right?
Yeah.
So until we get a delta in any one of those, I mean, we're going to work on some stuff. But until we get a delta, it's really hard to know which direction our district is going in those specific things. So. Look forward to whether I'm sitting here or not next year to see how this goes.
Do we know why the participant number went down from the last survey we did? So we, we were running like three hundred and twenty, three thirty, um, district members that participated.
I do not have an answer why it was low this time.
I got a fleet of questions. So if anybody else wants to jump in. Um, is there a way to benchmark these to other similar schools to us, either state or nationwide?
You can benchmark if you'd like to, but the problem is what you're focusing on is what's your internal dynamics are. So we can say, here's our average and we use the, um. Oh, I'm trying to think the whole, the large polling company that does all the national polls and they benchmark everything against that. Um, the problem is when they did that is every district is different for the employer in that category. And they don't have uniform, how you focus on your work, your focus on your work is your building, your district. So we could ask for that. I don't think it'd provide much more than saying we are good or we're bad compared to other peers. And then that's how most surveys done. And then people don't do the work to grow and get better.
So then district, the district will have goals set by the top three and bottom three, and then each building will have their own goals?
No, it'd be action plans. So what we'll do is we're going to do these little actions. We already have goals, what we're trying to accomplish as a district right now. We're going to do some action plans and see if we can engage our people better. Okay, on those pieces, we're not asking from the rewrite the goals we currently done. We may modify some if they align. Otherwise we'll lose focus on our academic goals that we showed you, um, where we're going and, and the purpose for the budget and everything's that we're doing there. We start to shift away that because now we just change our direction if we make new goals. We're trying to do is say, we're making one or two small action plans to improve what our employee experience is. And if we think that's going well, we can go back and look at the information, say, should we add another one or two things to make that better? This, this will not be complete share, changing of our goal system from what we originally started from our strategic plan. It will help us tweak it in the future. But not five months into our strategic plan, or actually this was three months and we got the, the surveys done, three months into our strategic plan. For us to shift directions would be way too soon.
And, and maybe we need terminology because I think that's a confusing piece right now. Cause if you're creating an action plan, you're, you're creating another goal. It's just not the goal that, it's separate from the goal that you had set. Because you're going to remeasure it again next year and then see how you compare to it. Um, so it is another, a goal of, of sorts. So maybe when we get a new consultant. We need to figure out a naming structure and then build a glossary so we can all speak the same terms.
So we have goals, right? We have five areas.
Yep, we have.
Four pillars, sorry. This is employee experience only, right? This is one small.
Piece of that whole thing.
Piece of that whole thing. So I think.
But, but they're creating plans for improvement out of it.
Macro.
Which, which is a goal, but.
We, we're going to talk in circle and semantics on that.
Kernels, kernels of improvement, not. I mean, it leads to larger things, I think. I think I'm see where we're going here, I think.
And do we know what success is?
Success is what we define it as and getting better. Continuous improvement. Here's the thing, if, if we measured at a two and next year we went to a two point five and the next year went to a three, would you say we're making success? If I have ten percent or thirty percent or this, this for the fun, let's say we have forty percent of our kids absolutely not even close to basic in math scores. The next year we get into thirty. That basic score goes to thirty percent. We're making improvement, twenty percent. Now, did I say they're all proficient yet? No. But are we reducing that net low? How, how are we going to say, what's our measure? Where we were, are we getting better? Continuous improvement. Um, we can set our goal here. The question is if we get fifty percent to our goal. And we got fifty percent of the way there in our first goal, are we, are we making improvement? Was our goal lofty? Maybe, maybe it wasn't. Maybe we made a lot of mistakes, but we can, we can always assess what we did and how we got to that point. But are we making continuous improvement efforts?
And if you go backwards, is it still success?
I'd say that's a reevaluation of what you're doing. To make changes.
So if you can analyze and, and learn from that, that's a success. So it's.
Piece of it.
It's not so much reaching your goal. It's about moving forward and learning. How to implement as we go forward. This is my wheel. Other questions?
Ten C fall enrollment, twenty twenty five, twenty six on state count day. The official enrollment count was Friday, September twenty sixth for the twenty five, twenty six school year.
So this has become our, this has become our one page review sheet on this, you know? When you look at the left hand column, twenty nine eighty, that's butts in seat. Okay, does not have, um, our preschool, early childhood students for that. So then what I do is you look at the homeschool connection, it took Brits data there. Now our current, current count is fifty nine and thirty two point eight nine and five, but our count day was fifty one and twenty eight point five five. We had some kids that moved from. Our schools into homeschool connections. So that's where that difference is at, eight bodies with it. On the right hand side is our average class size does not include the rural or homeschool connections on that. That's our average class size based on core class size section. Now. You look at the high school, I want to put some context in this. You may have a class that only has twelve or thirteen kids due to scheduling. You may have a class that's thirty four. That's why it's an average. When you get down to the middle school, down to junior kindergarten, those are much more accurate to actual class sizes, but nine through twelve can. Can vary quite a bit based on a student's schedule and you may have an English class that has thirty two. The next one after that has sixteen, just because of course schedules. We put on here, building open enrollments. Here's open enrollment total. We currently have almost thirteen percent of our students, they attend the mead school district or open enrolled into the district. Leading that is, um. I believe P V E at twenty eight point six on the right hand side, a hundred and forty kids. Um, and then we have stage barn at twenty four point two five percent. With that, the high school actually has eight percent of a student, almost eight percent of the student population that's open enrolled in. This is based on count day with that. When you look across the board where you see about three hundred students from Rapid City School District that open roll into our district, of which forty six actually tend all the way up to Sturgis Brown High School. So that's by district and everything else that's in your board packets for that for review. Um, why we put estimated on this? Because the state gives an estimate, we do our estimated report off infant and campus and the state has a final number. And sometimes they don't quite match up body for body at times on that. Um, because when that's exactly polled, so. And we put this out for you every year to use. Questions on enrollment? But that's where all of our students are coming from. In district or out of district.
Might as well wait, I think maybe forecast a little bit what you think in next September is like you like.
All right. Thanks Brett for the opportunity for me to give such positive information. Right now I'm.
Be short and concise.
That's after a budget discussion. Here we go. All right. I actually think we'll be down thirty four students right now based on where we're at. Um, just looking at trend and look at that, that's thirty four students less when we start our budget. We're hoping to be at our current twenty nine, forty eight, just under forty eight. We're probably going to be closer to twenty nine. Thirteen, twenty nine, fifteen, somewhere in there. It's gonna be my guess. That's the number I end up sending to the state for their stuff for budgeting for the state budget purposes. Um, reason being is, um, if you look at the increased number of open enrollments and open enrollment from homeschooling. Our, our open enrollment has become stagnant. I think there's some things we can do to change that, which we'll talk about this spring. With that, and we have not, third thing is we have not seen birth rates increase. Fourth thing is we have not seen the expansion of. Fourth thing is we have not seen the expansion of Ellsworth Airport Base. So any of those things could easily bring in twenty, thirty more students. It's tough to predict homeschool connections, but we'll be looking at a proposal to invest more money and personnel into that and communicate that more as a, not a pilot pro, problem, uh, program anymore, but a regular program that stands on its own and actually have its own building code K through eight. So students will be connected there and then pushed out to schools for in-person. And allow us easier to track all that information and cost controls. So that's the long version of the short answer.
Ten D, South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit. The state has reviewed and accepted the audit report and the exception of the single audit section for the fiscal year twenty-five. The federal government has not yet finalized the twenty-five compliance supplement.
We just did that today, they, they find it accepted at the federal level, certified it, and so we're on to next year. The only thing that's lingering out of the twenty-four, twenty-five audit would be the payable adjustment that was done as not an adjustment from food service to the general fund, as we talked about that before, as we were attempting to get those payables dropped in the right buckets to pay them out. Over the course of the last eight or ten years, there have been some, some probably inaccuracies in that, and, and there is a final adjustment, about seventy-four thousand dollars that has been put on the books, but hasn't been finalized until we see how food service does the rest of the year. There could be an option, again, we say, we need to just go ahead and, and let the general fund absorb that because food service is not in a position to have that seventy-four thousand dollars taken off their balance sheet. As of right now, they don't. We have about a ninety-eight thousand dollar balance in food service, that payable adjustment is seventy-four thousand. It's highly probable we'll ask you to, to essentially forgive that and keep that money on the books. Or else we just turn around, transfer money right back over. So that's the only thing pending out of this audit that's really left to be finalized.
Item eleven, reports. Any administrators wanna come up and give a report? Board reports, uh, stoplight report is on there for twelve, twenty-five. We have, you can see our numbers are climbing. So our hours did not increase over the last month or the number of board members that have completed training for the ten hours, we have hit a hundred percent on the tracker, we're at sixty-seven percent for board members that have attended at least one event. And if you've attended events, um, let me know or put them on that tracking document. Uh, we're at forty-four percent of board members that have attended at least three events. And zero board members that have attended six events, so the goal is to get to six events, but this gives us a tracking process to watch as we climb up that. And then strategic planning, um, create a survey to determine board members' preference for, uh, pillar champion that was sent out and had six respondents, assign board members to pillars to be champions of, that is done, that'll go, we'll go over that next. Um, board members will meet as a pillar group every ninety days, that ninety-day mark is coming up in December.
January, so what we'll do is after we get the ninety-day results in December, I'll set up a Zoom call. Okay, just a Zoom connection, so you don't have to drive in or anything else to review those results on that with you by your pillar.
And each pillar has at least two board members, so if you bring up pillar champions next. That will show you who is on each pillar.
So you, you'll see the results prior to the January meeting, what we're doing for your pillars, so you're very familiar with at least that pillar or anything else that you ask questions about. But we'll do that over a Zoom call. Probably early evening where it's available for people.
So in to get to that, I took the results from that form that was sent out, um, plugged people in and then kind of moved people around a little bit as their second choice allowed for filling in some of those positions. So finding facilities and operations was a, was a stretch. So Lee, you got. You and Tom got dumped in there. But that'll be the pillar champions for this year. Any questions?
I reached out to Tanya maybe a month ago, asking about webinar access and all that, the rates have gone up. So, I mean, she said that you had inquired about that too, but looking at like our stoplight report and then continuing training hours. I think we need to be more communicative about more opportunities, especially things that we can do asynchronously. Or maybe it's just me, I don't know, do we all want more opportunities for to hit those hours? Because like I said, reached out to, about the ASBSD stuff and it's.
It went from one twenty-five to three hundred.
Yeah, it's considerably more expensive than it used to be. I mean, it's a great opportunity, but like looking at it, if we have other opportunities for similar things, like they have historical recordings of webinars and things like that, I mean, that's a possibility, but yeah, if there's other like asynchronous opportunities and maybe I'm just missing it because I don't look for those opportunities outside of what we already have. Um, but I think that's something that for people like me who have six kids and a million things going on, more asynchronous, AKA I can watch it whenever I want to, um, would be useful. And cost effective too, yeah, yes, that is.
And I, I was thinking about sending out a survey, I haven't talked to Mr. Wormstead about this, but looking at if there's possibly on that, when we come in for that extra training session, um, if there wasn't some type of training that we may want to get then, that maybe a short half an hour or an hour or so, if we want to know more about curriculum, maybe Ms. Johnson can present on that, or if we wanted to do something on finance as we come into that, maybe Mr. Burdett does a presentation or. Um, so I could send out, uh, another form for everyone to kind of do a survey and see if there's any common theme of something we could train on and then see if we have somebody in-house that could possibly do that.
I think Chris, he could do a special education webinar.
So yeah, special ed would be really. At one of the elementary buildings.
Justin, quick question on the spotlight report, for the board members that have attended at least six events, like I have. How often do you update this?
So I went into the document that I'd shared and I, it doesn't look like it's updating, so I might not have your. So I'm gonna go back in and look.
Okay.
Because I talked to a couple of other board members tonight and they said they had added theirs in. So I'm gonna go in and double check that.
Yeah, okay.
Is it updated on yours right now, Megan? What's, what's the file name on yours? Ten of.
Twenty-eight listed, I'm the final two, with Scotty having one, two, three, four, five, six, seven above me.
I go to a lot of things.
Well, I have two versions on mine, I have one with a date and one without a date.
This one has the date.
So it says ten of twenty twenty-five?
Bottom date is eleven, eleven twenty-three.
No, the file name. So I, yeah, I'll, I'll look into that because there could be some privileges on my side that have been locked down.
It was the one that you emailed to. Because that's how I, I, I search in my Outlook for tracker to pull it up every time.
Yeah, well, it didn't email to me, it just emailed to you guys and it didn't go into my send. Um, so eleven V one is ASBSD legislative review. Scotty, you wanna give us an update?
Yeah, um, so I went to peer on November twenty-first for the delegate assembly, lasted about forty-five minutes, um, maybe. And all of the, uh, let's see, all of the standing positions and all of the resolutions passed.
Was there anything that we voted for or against that passed, I guess?
No. Nope.
Eleven C, Black Hills Special.
Can I, really quick?
Oh, yeah.
Um, I just want to invite school board members, as we were talking about events to attend, um, on Thursday, this Thursday, December eleventh. At the middle school, we are having family game night, so, um, free pizza, drinks, um, water. Um, door prizes, lots of board games.
What time, Megan?
Five thirty to seven, so five thirty is when we'll, we'll open the doors to eat and essentially we'll have a bunch of board games and, um, cards and, um, some floor games, like we have Twister. Um, we'll just all be spread out, you come in with your family, eat your dinner, play a board game and leave when you're done. So.
December eleventh is also Central Meads, um, Christmas play.
Yep.
So.
There's a lot going on in December, we had to move it, it was originally scheduled for the day of the power outage, so we had to cancel.
Or is it Atoll? When's Central Mead?
Atoll's when, or Thursday, yeah.
Okay, so I screwed that one up. All right, eleven C, Black Hills Special Services Co-op.
Our meeting is short because it's always right at Thanksgiving, so we got together to pass the bills, surplus the vehicle and got an update on the health insurance. And that was it.
Eleven D, Superintendent.
Uh, briefly, the review of the governor's budget to education, um, that was zero, so that's the conversation there. But we do have actually the sheet that I gave with the legislators there, talking about options within that area for possible one-time money, which is gonna be one of the big pushes there, hopefully we can get ongoing funding moving through that. But you have a legislative dinner handout there to talk with that, the other thing I did is I gave you the first draft copy, that's very similar to everyone's talking points, it's probably the most brief ones, if you get caught talking about what's important to education, you have the SDSSA one there for you to use and look at, so. But right now the governor's proposal's zero, waiting for the legislature to counter in January, which they will.
Were you gonna update on federal tax?
Oh, yeah. Well, if you like IRS regulations, currently right now, the federal tax credit for the seventeen hundred dollars per, um, taxpayer that you can get to put into a scholarship granting organization. Um, what I've learned so far is that the, our current foundations would not be eligible within our community because ninety percent of the funds must go into the scholarship grants for that, so in order to do this, we'd have to start our own with it, there's twenty-five day period to comment on this, so I'm currently working through the SGO guidelines, it's similar to a typical foundation, just gonna have very specific language and what the purpose is and those funds can be used for that. I think we're, I think we're gonna have to start a, a separate one for that to move forward, uh, won't be under our umbrella. Um, we are going to be opposed to regional probably or, um, statewide ones that we have to then request funds for. We want to have our people locally, you know that they're donating to a local scholarship granting organization with a local board making decisions on those sixty-eight items that we can use. We want, we do not want to be beholden to one like the state has for the insurance companies that somebody else controlled, we, so those are things that I've learned so far in this for that. I think probably by March, you're going, and when final rules come out, you'll want to then engage Eric Neese in helping us set up a SGO appropriately or an attorney that does that to get that set up right with the correct guidelines and form a correct board to use that efficiently. But I recommend that you pursue the SGO for the tax credits, because I can choose to send my seventeen hundred dollars either to our local SGO to support kids in our district, under three hundred percent, families under the three hundred percent, uh, three hundred percent of the poverty guidelines. Or I can choose to pay those seventeen hundred dollars in taxes to the federal government. That's the difference. And it would support all our after-school programs if you wanted that for income base. And alternative education this summer and other items that we currently pay for, if they meet qualify.
And to clarify, then that would be for the, it would be district-wide is what we're going for?
Yes, it'd be district-wide, the issue is how that is, that's what I'm trying to figure out how that money can be parsed out, it's, if you like IRS regulation, got about fourteen pages that you can read here, but, um, it looks like there could be some specific things about how that's broken out to each location, but I, I don't have a good clear answer on that yet.
Is it seventeen hundred dollars per taxpayer or is it, can you give to multiple schools?
It's seventeen hundred dollars per taxpayer, you can't give to seventeen hundred dollars to school A, school district A, school district B, so I can't give seventeen hundred dollars here to the Mead School District and give seventeen hundred dollars to my grandkid who's nine, to his school, let's say he's in a school, I can't give that money, seventeen hundred dollars with it either. I can't personally do that twice, I can do it once.
Okay.
I could split it, but that's how the numbers work.
Did they ever think you could do that per student that you had in school?
Nope, it's seventeen hundred dollars per taxpayer.
I don't think it's to replace the child tax credit.
No, it is not.
Again, you're gonna wanna consult your accountants.
Yeah, it's, it's a, the big beautiful bill is a way to create a voucher system at the federal government level because the seventeen dollar, a hundred dollars is not going to the federal government and then government paying a voucher system. You're making a choice to put that money into a voucher system targeted specifically to your local school or private school or whatever it is. And then they restricted how you can spend that money out of that SGO and what you can spend it on and what the income guidelines were, so. Interesting way to do it, instead of having federal government send seventeen hundred dollars out and you apply for your SGOs, you as an individual just could choose which ones you wanna support instead of having the federal government send the money out, same effect, but less bureaucracy.
But that won't be available for this tax year, though.
Nope, it starts January twenty-seven for that. So we should have final rules supposedly in March, my guess is July, but we have to know enough about how to set up an SGO up so we can be in a position to have everybody aware of that, including employees, because it can be a tax, it can come right out of your paycheck, I guess, to, to a foundation, so. On that.
Eleven D one, Christmas break. Christmas break will commence on Monday, December twenty-second and go through Friday, January second. Classes will resume on Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty-six. Upcoming calendar events, December thirteenth, Finance Committee meeting, December twenty-second through January second is Christmas break and January twelfth will be our next school board meeting. Item thirteen A, Executive Session, school board members will enter into executive session to discuss personnel, SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two point one. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to enter into executive session, discuss personnel according to what SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two point one.
So Brian with the motion. Tim with the second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. We will enter into executive session at eight thirty-five. He wanted seven minutes.